This is planning board, March 25th. I'm Eric Nail and chairman, so if the rest of the board can state their names, I guess.
Mark Sprague.
Danielle Spicer.
Jim Bar.
Mike Gore.
Pete Triscoll.
All right, we have a quorum, so the first item is to open up the hearing.
Do you want to go through the guidelines for the remote meeting?
Okay, either way, sure, I'll do that.
All right, here we go.
Host it.
So here, I do have a shared screen, so everyone that are participating via a personal computer should be able to see these.
Can I request to take it over or no?
I can make you the host, it might be easier.
If you just want to scroll, that's right, yeah, that's fine, you could just scroll. So you want me to just read this or?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
Okay, all right, so pursuant to government bakers, March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather one place at Town of Bolton Planning Board, will conduct their public meeting and hearings via remote participation, no impersonated meetings of the public will be permitted. Remote access to plug meetings, this is done through Zoom, it will be used for remote conferencing services to allow for remote access to public meetings, access numbers and web address will be provided as part of each meeting's agenda posted to the town calendar on the homepage of Bolton's website. Meetings can be accessed from a personal computer, cellphone and/or telephone. Cent抬起的planning board meetings will continue to be broadcast by Bolton Access Television through Zoom's record feature. The protocols are all participants entering the meeting via personal computer are required to rename themselves with their official first and last name, which we've done, computer participants are encouraged to click on the participants feature in Zoom to view all the participants and to use the chat and raise hand feature. Okay, so the raise hand feature, we'll see it on them or you'll see it, Erica?
I will see it, yes.
Okay, computer participants are encouraged, oh, I already read that, computer participants may pin to a particular video screen. It is recommended to pin to Erica Yuriarty, this can be done by right clicking over the three dot symbols in the top right corner of Erica's video screen. Okay, see it, the chairman will identify him or herself, the chairman will conduct a roll call of the board, all right. The chairman will call the meeting to order. All participants excluding board members will be muted throughout the meeting unless called upon by the chairman. All participants are required to state their email and address when called upon by the chairman, participants called upon more than once should restate their name, all documents displayed throughout the meeting will be controlled by the town planner, only the computer participants will be able to view documents. Okay, if and when the chairman allows for public comments, questions will be conducted in the following sequence, the chairman will read public comment, questions received in advance of the meeting followed by real time board and/or applicant responses. The chairman will read real time comments, questions typed by computer participants in the chat feature a lot, followed by real time board and/or applicant responses. Computer participants must click on chat to enter their comment question. The two setting must be set to everyone or the public comment will not be recognized by the board. The chairman will call on computer participants one by one with the raise hand feature, followed by board and/or applicant responses. Computer participants must click on raise hand to be called on. The chairman will ask if any other participants accessing the meeting have comments, questions. Board members needing to be recused at any point during the course of the meeting will be placed in a virtual waiting room by the town planner. Is that it?
That is it.
All right, yeah, looks like we're on track. Okay, all right, so I guess we will open the hearing. You want to scroll down a little bit, Erica? Or you want, you want me to pull it, I could pull it up myself. Yeah.
Is that good?
Yeah, that's good. In accordance with Massachusetts Journal laws, chapter 48, section 11, notices hereby given that the Bolton Plan Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 25th, 2020, at 7:00 PM, to hear and act upon the application of Built Best Construction LLC 92 Middle 6 Road, Unit 3, Tinsborough, Mass. 01879 for modification to a special permit dated April 8th, 2015. Special permit was issued for a common driveway located at 147 Long Hill Road in Bolton's residential zoning district in accordance with section 250-17 of the code of the Town of Bolton. The driveway provides access to 147, 149, 151, 153, and 155 Long Hill Road. Also identified on assessors map 4D is parcel 52 and map 3D is process 46, 47, 48, 49. The applicant seeks modification to the special permit for the approval of certain design deviations from the approved special permit site plans endorsed June 10th, 2015, identified after construction of the common driveway, and any further relief deemed necessary or appropriate by the Town of Bolton Planning Board. Okay, and I am, is it butter accusing myself?
Mark, I will go ahead and put you in the virtual rating waiting room.
Oh, boy.
Hold on one minute. Okay, Mark is now in the waiting room. So I'm going to unmute Kevin Erickson, who's representing the applicant.
Thank you, members of the board. For the record, attorney Kevin Erickson on behalf of Built Best Construction LLC. With me tonight on this teleconference is Walter Erickson, manager of Built Best Construction LLC. Seeking a modification of an existing common driveway special permit and acceptance of a final as-built plan. This board will recall that the applicant submitted a progress as-built prepared by Du Charmandilis to the board for its review back in the spring of 2019. In addition, at that time, we submitted a letter from Du Charmandilis dated May 8th, 2019, which made certain recommendations for additional work based upon Du Charmandilis's review of the as-built and the approved plans of record. The letter also noted additional deviations that Du Charmandilis believed were insubstantial and requiring no further action. Based upon that and the progress as-built, the applicant submitted way back in May of 2019, a proposed final action item list for this board's consideration. At a public meeting held on May 22nd, 2019, the board reviewed that, heard testimony from staff, the towns engineer, the applicant, and the residents. Ultimately, that proposed final action item list was augmented that evening by the board, but approved that night. Over the course of the next few months and through a public meeting process that spanned a total of seven public meetings, the final action item list, which was amended by the board on various subsequent occasions to add additional items, was completed in full by the applicant. The applicant's completion of all items on that action item list was acknowledged at the November 13, 2019 meeting. In addition, at that November 13th meeting, it was determined that based upon recommendations of town council, the applicant would seek the current modification of the special permit through this public hearing process for acceptance of the remaining deviations. Just as a reminder, although all of these deviations were discussed at some length during the seven public meetings, I will go through those deviations quickly. The first deviation which pertains to the driveway slope, the board will again recall that the first 40 feet of the common driveway is in excess of the 4% requirement of the special permit. This was noted on the original progress as-built and was addressed in the May 8th letter by Du Charmandilis where they noted that despite this deviation, the driveway was functioning as intended. They reiterated this position in their January 27th, 2020 letter, which we submitted with this current application. This is also consistent with the town engineer's comments during the public meeting process during which it was noted that this deviation was on a safety or functionality concern. Second, as it pertains to the driveway turnouts, as noted in the May 8th letter from Du Charmandilis, the turnout at station, beginning at station 306 exceeds the maximum 300 foot spacing, design spacing by six feet. They also noted in both of their letters, both the May letter and the most recent January letter, that this was a minor deviation and that the driveway and turnout functioned as intended. This was discussed early in the public meeting process, as the board probably recalls, and was determined to be a de minimis deviation and accordingly not part of the final action item list. In addition, as was discussed at various public meetings and as again reiterated in our application, the driveway turnouts at stations 6, 9, and 12 are slightly non-conforming to the requirements of the special permit. Nonetheless, as noted by Du Charmandilis in their January 2020 letter, the turnouts are substantially consistent with the requirements of the special permit and achieve the underlying intent. The common driveway, as a third item, the common driveway was constructed without a crown between stations 0 and 510. As we noted during the public meeting process on numerous occasions, this is a planned deviation. The driveway was always constructed or intended to be constructed with a majority of the driveway incorporating a super elevated design, that's evident from the approved plans of record. Only the initial third of the driveway was designed with a crown. As we stated during the public meeting process and as was reiterated by Du Charmandilis in their January letter, both of these designs are permitted in the Town of Bolton for common driveways. In addition, Du Charmandilis expressly noted in their January letter that the driveway functions according to the original intent of the approved plans and that the existing super elevated design does not pose a safety or engineering concern. I would also note that the initial concern back in May when the progress as-built was submitted pertaining to this deviation was that it appeared that there was some excess water flow over the asphalt berms between stations 350 and 375 that was shooting across the driveway. Back in May, it was recommended by our engineers that a swale be constructed to pick up any of that excess water that might be flowing over the asphalt berm in those locations. This remediation approach was reviewed by the board and Mr. Hamway and incorporated into the final action item list. The swale, as designed, was completed last summer and was confirmed and acknowledged as completed according to plan prior to the closing of the public meeting process back in November. Finally, there were a few additional insubstantial planned deviations noted in the application pertaining to plantings as well as size deviation of swales between 11 and 12. As noted, public meeting process in regards to the landscaping deviation, there is no regulatory standard at all for plantings in the Town of Bolton for a common driveway. Nonetheless, certain of the size specifications noted on the plan do deviate slightly from the actual as-built conditions, which again was discussed at great length during the public meeting process. But just as a reminder, we did take some action as it pertains to land. During that public meeting process, we planted additional trees and shrubs and are now overplanted in number on both trees and shrubs on site. In addition, as we noted during the public meeting process, the vast majority of the undersized plantings have survived for multiple years since planting and continue to thrive. And we also demonstrated during the public meeting process that a number of the so-called undersized shrubs are low bush blueberry plants and are actually existing at a maximum height for the species type and that the variation is really owing to a notation error on the plan. In regards to the swales, as noted by Du Charmandilis, those deviations are insubstantial planned deviations and they do not pose a design or engineering concern. And again, those deviations are not regulatory, they're just planned deviations. So based on all of the above, the applicant and the applicant's engineers suggest that there are no deviations that remain that have any material impact on the safety functionality or design of the common driveway and there's no compelling need whatsoever for engineering or otherwise to take any further action. We've also been made aware of the fact that since our application, two of the five owners on the common driveway have reached out to the board to state that in their estimation, the common driveway is functioning adequately and to further state their opposition for any more work on the common driveway, in particular, any work that would involve paving. In addition, both the Seelys and Silens have contacted the board and stated a general opposition to any additional paving. We've worked with the board in good faith, I believe, for over a year now to address their concerns. We've completed all the items requested of us by the board on that final action item list, which was amended multiple times during the public meeting process, all at great expense of the applicant frankly. And we believe that the modifications that we're requesting now can and should be granted by the board, that all remaining deviations should be deemed insubstantial and that the finalized bill should be accepted by this board as the plan of record and this project should close out. I don't have anything further to add except to say that we're here to answer any questions the board has.
Eric, I think you're muted. Oh, I apologize, Eric.
Yeah, I know.
Somehow you got muted.
Well, there was a ruckus going on, so I muted myself and couldn't unmute.
Oh, okay.
I didn't realize that, so don't mute yourself. Okay, so do you want me to read through?
I would say the next step, we should hear from Fred Hamway, he is on this meeting, I can pull up his comments from today.
Perfect.
You want me to start now, I'm sorry?
Yeah, feel free to start Fred, hear your comments here.
I have two comments regarding the letter, the application, whatever it's called, the paperwork that was submitted by Kevin and he just went over. The first one is on the driveway slope on, and this would be on page four of the paperwork that they submitted. It's under driveway slope, driveway slope is on page three, but paragraph three of that section is on page four. And it talks about the slope of the drive with the actual slope. And I just want to just clarify for the board, this was stated back in the October meeting. So on paragraph three, if people are looking at that, it does say the first 20 feet, Kevin states the first 20 feet of the driveway has an average slope of 6%, which I guess is true. But in actuality, just to reiterate what was stated back on in October, the first eight feet is 3.2%, the next 11 feet is 8.3%. So either that first 20 feet, over half of it's at 8% plus. And then after that, the next nine feet is 8.7 and the next 10 feet is 8.3, which adds up to 38 feet out of the 40, there's supposed to be 4%. Just want to, just so the board is clear on what is stated and what they're going to be talking about. So if anybody has any questions on that right now, I can answer it, but that's just a clarification of what was stated in their application. Any questions on that? If not, I will continue. Should I continue?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Further, I'm sorry, go ahead, someone have a question?
No, I was just saying, go ahead, Fred.
Okay, so further in that same, the end of that paragraph, it says the ADA requirements are 8.3%, a 1 in 12 slope, which is true. But I don't believe that has any relevance on the driveway slope for cars. So I don't believe that has any bearing on it.
That's correct.
Excuse me?
I was just saying, that's correct.
Okay, the second comment I had, the second and last one is about the crown, which is number two, following the same page here, but I'm sorry. It's on page five is the crown. And just to clarify, generally when driveways are super elevated, which the town does allow, as Kevin stated, there is no curb on the side, on the edge of the pavement. The runoff goes across the road and off the grass and into a swale or some other type of device to carry the runoff. It doesn't go to the edge of pavement and collect and run down the edge of pavement. Everyone follows that? And in this case, where there's curbs in the first 500 feet, it's being directed, it's intended to be directed directly off the middle of the driveway to the sides and down to catch basins. So as you proceed down this driveway from Long Hill Road, the first part of it from Long Hill Road to Station 1+20, give or take, flows in a sheet flow down the driveway, there's no crown, there's no cross slope, it's flat across the driveway. From that point on, from Station 120 to 180, it then has a cross slope from right to left. As you proceed further down, the driveway flattens out again. So what was in the gutter at Station 180, the left side of the gutter continues to flow down the gutter. And then the balance of it from Station 180 to 375 is flowing straight down the driveway. At 375, give or take, this, all this flow collects and crosses back over to the right side to catch basin one, and that's what we're seeing in some photos from way back about not just might be running off the side of, coming off the edge of the road on the driveway, onto the driveway that's now collected by a swale, but it was also the driveway, where the driveway collection of the runoff was happening. So I just want to make that clear, it doesn't change anything, but just so the board is clear on the issue with cross slopes and crowns. Once again, as I said in the beginning, the cross slopes are intended to flow off the driveway completely, the edge of driveway, not collect on the edge and then flow down along the profile of the edge of the driveway. If you have any questions on that, those are the only two comments I had. Doesn't change anything on what we've been talking about, I just wanted to make sure the board had a clear understanding and what was stated by Kevin in his written application was cleared up.
That's good, thank you.
Okay.
So any questions from the board for Fred? Should I read the comments, go through the comments from email, Eric?
I think that would be, that would be a good next step.
Okay.
So Erica, just a logistical question, it looks like there's a hand up. I see that. Do we address that now or later? It's, you know, it's really up to the board, Eric, did you want to take a question from the public before you read the comments that were received prior?
Maybe I should go through the comments we received prior and then if there's something on top of that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I think that's fine.
Okay, all right, let me see, so I have the grouping of email from Scott Cienec to start, should I read that one first or I guess it doesn't matter? Okay, so let's see, all right, so one email sent March 6th from Michael Sullivan says, Dear Erica, we received notice of the upcoming public hearing for the common driveway located at 147 through 155 Long Hill Road. We are the owners of 153, 155 Long Hill Road, we are ready to state for the record that at this point, our preference is to avoid any further disturbance or work on the common driveway. In particular, we would be very opposed to any further work that involved paving, repaving, or other paving or over paving of the common driveway, including the installation of a crown or any work to address the slope of the first 40 feet of the driveway. We believe the driveway functions adequately, we would appreciate if you could read this letter into record. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Mike and Aaron Sullivan. Also from Scott and Megan Cienec from 145.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Has there been an issue with any type of water or anything on that slope right now? That's more direct one.
Are you asking Fred or are you asking the butters?
Fred.
I haven't, I haven't seen any direct, you were talking about the runoff, I just explained how it flows to the left and right and so forth?
Yeah, has there been any type of pooling or anything that, yeah, any type of pooling basically?
Not pooling, what there was, so to speak, immediately, immediately after, based on pictures from the residents, was film of water still going across, but not pooling. Nothing is.
So basically, the runoff is getting to the catch basins as needed or it's she's flowing off?
As far as I know, it is going, it's going on to get to the catch basin, yes.
Carrying on with that email, let's see. So, so we're in reply to that email from Scott Cienec, not sure if I'm saying that right or not. Says, Hi Erica, Megan, I concur, we have seen no negative impact due to the minor deviation. We believe that additional work could compromise longevity and lead to further repair at our expense. We're concerned enough about the modifications that have already taken place and this is considerably more invasive. Thank you, Scott Cienec. All right, so that's one email, let me open up the other one. Okay. Let's see. So on Thursday. Oh, no, that's okay, you sent it out. Where they start, okay, here we go. On Monday, March 23rd, from Lauren Silly. Got an email that says, Hi Erica and Eric, thanks for sending this information. If my understanding is correct, this hearing wouldn't address any outstanding issues with the driveway, just the specific deviations. But I just wanted to mention that there is still work to be done where they expanded one of the turnouts, photo attached. I don't know if you could put that photo up, Erica, am I correct that it wouldn't be addressed now? I know I emailed you before and you said it was legal, but I would like to pose the question to the applicant. Why has the company name been changed to Built Best on this application from the original special permit as-built etcetera, which were filed under Applewood Construction? As I think I mentioned, I find it unbelievable that businesses are allowed to do that when they watch a project. If a project belongs to one company and is filed that way, I don't understand how the application for a modification would be valid if filed under a different name. In other words, what's stopping me or anyone else from starting a company and applying for a modification to another company's permit? Wouldn't that be an entirely different process, I'd love some more clarification on that, please let me know. If Don or someone else is better person to address this concern, I hope you're staying safe and healthy, Lauren Silly. Kevin Siling responded to this and he said, hi, to add to Lauren's message, wouldn't this be a question for town council? Are they simply trying to salvage the Applewood name, given they are three years behind in completing this project? Are still fighting the conservation violation fees, less I heard, and the mess they've made here in process? Also regarding the pick of the turnout that Lauren attached, it should be noted that this work was done in November in 16 degree Fahrenheit temperature prior to 7:00 AM in the morning, which is a town violation. There was no backfill placed behind the curb in there and there still isn't. Fred was not notified once again and Fred was not present despite the board's clear requirement that Fred be present. If Fred was present, I doubt he would have a lot of paving to be done at that hour and that temperature, per Susan Charmus screenshot. It appears this work may have been once again squeezed in at the last minute under improper conditions and done when they knew Fred would not be present or simply not notified, similar to the manhole work. Let's see, what other emails? Was that, was that the group of them, Erica, or is there?
Today, excuse me, today we received an email with a letter attached from Kevin Salon and his wife's attorney, Paul Haberty.
Okay, yeah, I got that. I guess we could address them all at the end, does that make sense or?
That's fine.
Okay. So let's see. So the email just reads attached, please find our letter on behalf of our clients, Kevin and Melissa Siling, please bring this to detention of the board for tonight's hearing. All right, it's a couple pages, so here goes. Dear Chair Nailand, this office represents Kevin and Melissa Siling with regard to their home at 151 Long Hill Road, Bolton, Massachusetts. The Silings purchased their home after this. Just make it a little bit bigger. Silings purchased their home after this board granted a special permit dated April 8th. 8, 2015, approving a common driveway to serve the properties located at 47, 149, 151, 153, and 155 Long Hill Road. The petitioner for the original special permit was Walter Erickson, Applewood Construction. After multiple meetings at which the developers sought to collect the remaining portions of the performance bond held by the board, despite the fact that numerous requirements of the special permit had not been complied with, town council provided an opinion dated October 22nd, 2019, indicating that in areas where the as-built plans are not in substantial performance with the approved plans, a modification of the special permit is required. On February 5th, 2020, Built Best Construction LLC submitted a request for modification of the special permit. The Salins after offered the following comments regarding the request for modification. One, the request for the modification of the special permit was filed by Built Best Construction LLC, but the special permit was issued to Walter Erickson of Applewood Construction. No evidence was provided with the modification request to indicate what, if any, interest Built Best Construction LLC has to request a modification of a special permit previously issued to another entity. The record is also devoid of evidence indicating what right, if any, Walter Erickson and Applewood Construction have retained to request a modification. Work stuff in the background just started blowing up. Where was I? Have retained the, to request the modification of the special permit, given that all the house lots have been sold to individual buyers. This is a jurisdictional issue which must be addressed prior to the issuance of any modification. Two, the applicant requests the modification of the special permit to authorize a slope in excess of the 4% limitation contained in the special permit. The applicant alleges that this deviation is de minimis despite the fact that the slope is somewhere between seven to eight percent. The Salins continue to contend the actual slope is closer to eight percent than seven percent. It's difficult to comprehend how a deviation that is up to double the slope allowed by the special permit could possibly be deemed to be a de minimis variation. While the developer may have placed the board and his purchasers in a position where objecting to this request modification isn't practical, it is insulting to suggest that the deviation from the approval plans is de minimis. While the Salins do not seek to have the driveway ripped up and regraded, the developer's negligence negligence in constructing the driveway has created a real hardship for every homeowner on Long Hill Road. Three, the applicant requests a modification of the special permit to authorize driveway turnouts that do not comply with the common driveway requirements. Specifically, the turnout at Stations 600 is 24, uh, 24 feet, 8.4 inches by 17 feet, 3.6 inches, where the requirement is 25 by 18. The turnout at Station 900 is even more deficient as it is 25 feet by 16 feet and 7.2 inches, making it nearly a foot and a half, making it nearly a foot and one half too narrow. Finally, the turnout Station 1200 is 25 feet by 17 feet and eight inches. The applicant also notes that the first turnout on common driveway presumptively at what should have been Station 300 was located approximately six feet further on to the common driveway than it should have been. The applicant has not requested relief regarding the size of this turnout, however, this is only because the original construction of this turnout was so deficient that the board required the applicant to go back and construct the turnout to the correct specifications. The Salins have not seen any report from the board's peer review engineer indicating that this was done correctly. Moreover, the Salins believe that this work was done at a time when the board's review engineer was not available to review the construction absent a review by the board's peer review engineer. If it's difficult to provide, it is difficult to provide any input on whether this proposed revision is acceptable or whether it remains insufficient. The applicant also requests a modification of the special permit to authorize the failure to construct the common driveway with a crown between Stations 000 and 500 as shown on the approved plans. The Salins disagree with the applicant's claim that the driveway functions accordingly to the original intent of the approved plans as water continues to sheet flow across the driveway, freezing in colder temperatures. Please see the pictures attached here too. The Salins note that the modification application submitted by the applicant does not request return of the remaining portions of the bond, nor does the public meeting notice issued by the board provide notice of any intent to release the remaining portions of the bond held by the board. Accordingly, the board may not discuss this issue at the hearing tonight without violating the open meeting law. Furthermore, given the lack of information regarding the review and inspection by the board's peer review engineer of the remaining outstanding issues, discussion regarding the release of the bond would not be appropriate tonight, even if properly noticed. All right. Anything else to read, Erica?
I believe that's all the comments we've received prior to the hearing.
Erica, am I, am I muted?
You are, you are not Kevin. No.
There is, this is Kevin Erickson. There is one more email that you received. I just want to make sure it gets on the record so, just so that they're all accounted for. On Tuesday, March 24th at 9:11 PM from Ms. Sealy.
Yes, I apologize. You are correct. Eric, there was, should be another one from Lauren Sealy.
Okay.
That I had sent you yesterday in an email.
Yesterday? Okay.
Yeah, I believe so.
Let's see. Just the comments received. I'm seeing the two original ones that are red.
I believe, I believe she actually CC'd you on the email. So if it's easier to search in your inbox, um, I believe you were on that email.
So it's from?
Lauren Sealy.
Okay.
I don't think, yeah, Erica, I don't think you sent that to everyone because we didn't, I don't think I have that either.
Erica, could you just resend it to me again or just put it on the screen?
I will, I can pull it up. Hold on one minute.
Yeah.
Do you see it, Eric?
Yep. Yep, I do. All right. Just from the top or? It was there?
It's just the top section, isn't it?
Okay. All right. So this is from Lauren Sealy. Hi Erica, thanks for clarifying. Just to be clear, I don't want the applicant to rip up the driveway to fix the slope and I think the turnouts are probably fine. So I have no problem with those deviations being approved. My concerns are mostly about the condition of the newer pavement that was added, but I'm sure Fred will take care of that when the time comes. Thank you, Lauren. Okay. Yeah, I did read that earlier somewhere. So I guess we have, you know, a few residents who aren't necessarily happy with the overall process, but they're fine with the, you know, the modifications to the special permit being the crowning, the slope and, uh, the turnouts. And then we have, so I guess I don't know if anybody wants to talk to those. But then we have the letter from the Salins attorney who addresses each issue. Um, I don't, I didn't really read that there was any specific action to take in their terms on, on any of those issues, but then their overall general comments were saying that we shouldn't release the bond. So I don't know if I summarized that properly. Does anybody want to talk, speak on any of that? Board first, I guess.
So I guess just for my clarification, understanding is, um, we're not discussing the bond, release of the bond at all tonight. What we are discussing is the special permit modification for the, um, for the plant. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, and the one thing that the attorney was saying is that it's not a de minimis change, like, you know, going from the eight percent to the, um, the four percent to the eight percent. Um, I guess that's what we're here to determine at this meeting, whether it's, um, I don't know what the wording officially is, Erica, but you know, what the, you know, what, what we're allowed to change, I mean, or to what extent.
Eric, this, this is Kevin Erickson?
Yep.
Is it, is it okay if I add a little bit of?
Yeah, go for it. Yeah.
We are absolutely not requesting, um, the release of the bond tonight. We understand that. Um, and we're requesting a, a modification of the special permit. We're not requesting an insubstantial modification or we're necessarily saying that the board need determine or agree with us that it's de minimis. Our larger point, as we mentioned during the public hearing, is our position is it's de minimis. I think our engineers agree with that. Um, it's, it amounts to, um, you know, a matter of, again, their determination that it doesn't impact the functionality or safety or engineering or design of the, that portion of the driveway, which largely was concurred with by the town's engineer as well. So, you know, I don't want to argue over semantics. That's our position, but I don't think the board needs to make that specific finding.
I think I agree with that. That's, I mean, we're just here to discuss the deviations.
Eric, in several of the comments received to date, there were questions regarding the fact that the, uh, the permit was originally applied by Applewood Construction and then the modification to special permit was applied through Built Best Construction. Do you think that you would like Kevin to answer that question?
Sure.
Thank you again, Kevin Erickson. As the board is probably aware, special permits run with the land. The application was originally submitted before Built Best Construction or any entity controlled by Walter was, um, before the property was owned by any of those entities. So, um, Built Best acquired title in 2015 and when they did, because the special permit runs with the land, the special permit vested in Built Best Construction. And since that time, really since the inception, it's always been under Built Best Construction. The common driveway covenant, which still gives us easement rights over the property for the next two years, I believe, is through Built Best Construction. Our application during the modification process has always been with Built Best Construction. So there's not really a confusion here, other than the fact that the original application was submitted by Applewood. Uh, but since that time, Applewood never owned the property, Built Best always owned the property. All the residents who purchased their lots from, uh, Mr. Erickson, they purchased through Built Best Construction LLC. The only exception there is Ms. Sealy who purchased directly from Dwayne Henry. She never purchased a, a property from Built Best. And at all times, this property was owned and controlled by Built Best exclusively.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I don't know. Are there any questions from the?
I see that Paul Haberty, um, the attorney for the salon has his hand raised, so I will go ahead and unmute him.
Okay.
Thank you, Erica. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But I did want to raise that issue with regards to the request, the modification, um, simply because there really is no evidence in the record to inform you as to who has the ownership interest and therefore who has the right to request a modification. Um, I don't believe that Built Best actually owns any of the lot remaining in the division, whether or not they have easement rights to do certain things. It is in the record as to whether those easement rights would go quite as far as to allow them to request a modification of this permit. Um, and I think it's in everybody's best interest that any modification of this special permit, um, done appropriately and by an entity that actually has the right to do it. I, I think that we haven't specifically objected to the requests, um, that have been made for these variations because we've been painted into a corner in which really simply allowing them to move forward and get the modification, um, is better than a result in which they have to go and rip up the road and do it again. You've heard that expressed by multiple of the neighbors and my clients feel the same way, um, but it's not because these changes are de minimis. It is because the disruption that would be caused by actually changing them, um, would be greater than, you know, the disruption of actually allowing the, the change to the special permit. So I, we do object to the characterization of these changes as de minimis. They do have an impact and it's a negative impact on the rights of our clients. Um, the, the fact that water is continuing to sheet flow, as Fred Hinway has stated in his comments tonight, um, you know, the super elevation of the roadway is not intended to be done in the circumstance such as what was done here. Um, we've submitted some pictures that show the sheet flow going across and it does freeze in the, in colder temperatures and that is a problem for my clients. Um, however, as I noted back when we met in, I think it was October, um, it's also a problem for my clients if we have final plans as built plans that don't agree with the plans that were approved by the board. So ultimately it's in everyone's best interest to have this special permit modified, but we want to make sure it's done right. We don't want to be put into a position where ultimately someone could come along and claim that we have a zoning violation applicable to any of these properties because the as-built plans don't match the approved plans. Thank you.
So can I just follow up on a question with regard to that? Given what Kevin Erickson just said with the ownership and everything, do we still, I guess maybe I'm unclear as to, are you basically stating that you don't feel that, um, the applicant on the modification is, is an appropriate applicant? Is that it?
What I'm saying is that I don't believe that information has been provided to the board to give you any rough of comfort with regard to that question. They've told you that Applewood never owned it and that Built Best was ultimately the, the entity that moved forward on the construction, but they haven't provided you any evidence of that. They certainly haven't provided you any evidence that they retain the rights to do it despite selling off all of them. But I just want to make sure this is done correctly.
Well, I can, Paul, uh, that's, and I can respond a little bit to that. The board absolutely has evidence that Built Best Construction was the owner of the property. The tri-party agreement executed between the board and Built Best is with the appropriate entity. Um, we've conducted all of our work over the course of the summer at the behest of the board and the residents, by the way, um, as Built Best. Every public meeting that I went to, and there were seven of them, I identified myself as representing Built Best Construction LLC. The common driveway covenant that I referred to earlier is a matter of public record. It doesn't need to be submitted to the board, but the board has it on file in any event. And we submitted it during the process of the, uh, the, uh, public meeting process when a question arose about our rights to, uh, complete construction on that, uh, common driveway. So to me, it just seems at this point that we're arguing over this is that, uh, Mr. Haberty really wants to have it both ways. He wants to suggest that we're responsible to do this and procedurally rectify these outstanding issues, but then at the same time suggesting we don't have the very authority to do what he's asking us to do and what the board's requested us to do. Mr. Haberty was aware that it was going to be Built Best Construction in November, who was filing this modification because he was at the hearing when the board suggested to the applicant that we go through this process in the first place. It's an 11th hour objection that has no merit, frankly, and that we're arguing about this when he can clearly just consent to it and he doesn't represent the rest of the owners. And if anyone else has any issue, certainly they have appellate rights.
And, and Mr. Chairman, that's my major concern here. Yes, other people do have appellate rights and that will impact the zoning validity of my client's property, which is an issue of concern. Um, and with regards to other documents that have existed and have been submitted to the board in other hearing proceedings, they weren't included in this request for modification. They're not, and they should.
They're, they're, they're part of the public record in, in the effect, uh, to the extent that they're already submitted to the board, they're part of the public record already and they're recorded at the registry of deeds. Your clients know about it, you know about it, Mr. Haberty, because it's referenced in their deed.
There, there's no reference whatsoever in the application materials to any of this.
Mr. Haberty, uh, well, I guess through the board, uh, do the Salins? Mr. Haverty, uh, well, I guess through the board, uh, do the silence consent to this application? I don't believe that we need their consent, but do they consent to this application?
I mean, I, I will let Kevin Salin, who is on the, the list here and is certainly listening to everything, speak for himself as to whether or not he's, uh, going to consent. Certainly, there was no request for consent of the property owners of these houses to consent to this request. Probably would have eliminated any questions with that regard, but we can certainly ask Kevin if he wants to speak up and, and provide that info.
And if Kevin wants to speak, that's fine. I mean, I haven't seen any email from anybody saying that these modifications shouldn't happen, so if there's any comments to that effect, you know, let's hear them, but otherwise, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse here.
I will unmute Kevin Salon to see if he would like to make a comment.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
I guess I don't really have a strong comment either way on it. I met with Paul briefly yesterday and today, and this kind of came up at the last minute. So, I'm not sure how I feel about it directly. What I can say is, no, no matter what the applicant wants to in these emails, all of the owners in this complex are more than ready to get this builder off the property. And that includes, um, you can speak up Scott if, um, you disagree. That includes the other, the other, the other owners as well. They, they've done enough damage. They've been here for three years. They paved the road after November 15th. They got a two-week extension, and they went past that and paved it in December, in the dark, in the rain. They paved over the manhole. They screwed up the arch in the middle of the road. They screwed up the slope at the top, and that's all they have continued to do, is do that and be contentious with us. I mean, at a, at a meeting last summer, I was walking into a boardroom meeting in Town Hall, and out of nowhere, I heard, "Hey asshole!", and I look up, and it's, it's, "Mr. Erickson!", looking at me.
Excuse me?
I had a quote, I had, I had a quote. I had a quotum, because that's what he said. And I, I said, "Excuse me?", and I just walked right in. And Kevin, I'm standing right there while Walter did it, so that's why, that's why the people on our property want every, want these guys gone.
I mean, that's not really, that's not really kind of the discussion right now, so.
This is, this is the route that we usually head, unfortunately, when, when Mr. Silent comments. But I would also note for the record that it was Mr. Silent who was caught audibly on tape during a public hearing.
All right, yeah. Yeah, I understand. Let's, I, I mean, I don't want to go down this route. Let's just get back to the business.
Eric, I have muted Kevin Salon. Um, if, if he has further comment, he can raise his hand, and I will.
Yeah.
Can I ask a, a, just a, a logistical question? Is it something as, so, just to put this to bed with regard to the applicant, is it something as simple as, you know, a doc, uh, some sort of follow-up document could be included with, um, just to, you know, clarify the applicant? I mean, it seems, um, you know, is there, is there, I guess, an additional piece of document that is needed, or are we good to go? I guess is what I'm just trying to get at.
Erica, in your, in your opinion, are we good to go?
You know, I, I, I don't think it can hurt just to have it on record, whether it be the deed, whether it be, I, I understand that the town has some of these documents already, but just to enter it into the, into the record, you know, it can't hurt. I can attest that the, um, the tri-party agreement is in the name of Built Best Construction. I reviewed it today to see if that was true, um, and as well as the maintenance agreement. But both of those documents are in the name of Built Best Construction. But, you know, it, it's very little effort to, um, I think, make a submission for the record, so why not?
Yeah, just, just something to have on record that, you know, clarifies things. So I think, um, the, the residents won't have concerns of who's, who's filing, you know, who this applicant is being filed on behalf of.
Just for a copy of the declaration of covenants and restrictions that I referred to earlier, uh, you want copies of the, the deeds out from Built Best Construction LLC? I'm, I'm, I just want to be sure that I'm clear on the directive.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I don't think copies of deeds and declarations are necessary, per se. I think just a letter from the applicant's attorney, providing deed references, you know, book and page numbers, and, uh, some sort of a narrative as to how that provides authority for them to request this should be sufficient. I, I don't think we need to bury anybody in paper with this. Easy enough to look up documents sent to registry, you know, with the book and page number provided, but at least then it has it in the record and, and anybody can refer to it.
So, I mean, Kevin, is that something you could do?
Absolutely. I don't have a problem with that. I would like to, though, not waste the remainder of this meeting. I would like to, if there's any other issues, I'd like to.
Agreed.
Discuss them now. So the only item that I'm providing to this board in advance of the next meeting is that narrative.
And, and, okay.
Good. Go ahead, Daniel.
I was just going to say, I think, um, if, if the rest of the board, um, and, and I don't know if there's any more additional questions, but the rest of the board is okay with this modification of site plan application, um, then it could be a condition. I mean, I, I don't think we have to, if we feel like there's no other additional information, we could still vote on that, um, conditional upon receiving that letter.
Yeah, I agree. All right. So, any other comments from anybody?
Mr. Chairman, I, I guess the only question I would have is, is if the submittal to the board is insufficient to provide the level of comfort to the board, that the applicant has sufficient rights to request a modification, if it's done via a condition, what happens next? If they submit that to you and it's reviewed, and for one reason or another, you determine it's insufficient, where do we go from there?
So, I mean, if, if, if it's been Built Best since the tri-party, I mean, I'm comfortable with it. Uh, just, Erica, I mean, if there's any legalese, uh, you know, I don't, that, you know, I'm, I'm not understanding, you know, let me know, but.
I, my suggestion would be, I still have to draft a decision based on the outcome of the hearing. Um, so, you know, I don't think there, I don't think there's any harm in leaving the hearing open for one more meeting, so that way I can get the book and page from Kevin for the deed. Um, we'll have that information. I'll have a draft decision. The board at the next meeting can close the hearing and then make a decision. That, you know, I, I don't see any harm in doing it that way.
Okay.
And again, if that's the preference of the board, then I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not relitigating all these issues again at the next meeting. I, I really, if there's any other issues that require attention, please let me know, and, and then I will get that.
I, I, this is, I mean, we're all professionals there with this stuff, and it, it's, it's getting long in the tooth, if, if you know what I mean. And, I mean, it, it, it seems to me that the residents are split on what needs to get done, and this has gone on too long. It's, 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 you know, since I've been on, it, it, it's been, um, it, it's been going on too long. So what do we need to get this done?
I can get that narrative to Erica by the end of this week. And if that's the only outstanding item, then there's no issue closing this public hearing at the next meeting.
So would that suffice with the residents that aren't happy about this?
I think it's just one set, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I only speak for the Salins.
Right.
That is the only outstanding issue that we have raised. Um, going through my letter, as, as you write into the record, it indicated our frustration with some of the characterizations, but ultimately, you know, my clients recognize, as I've stated previously, that they're better off having this behind them. Just want to make sure it's done properly.
I mean, like Erica said, we need to vote on the draft amendments, I guess, right, Erica? So, you know, whether we close it today or next week, it really doesn't matter. I don't see that there's any other issues that are going to come up. Seems pretty cut and dry, what we're talking about for the modifications.
Right. At, at this point, we've heard from the majority of the residents in regards to the deviations. I believe the only family we haven't heard from are the Sharmas. So, I mean, there is a possibility, I suppose, that they could submit something between now and the next hearing date, um, but, uh, you know, I, I feel comfortable with that approach.
Okay. That sounds good. So what do we have to vote to continue to the next meeting?
Correct.
Which is? It's April 8th?
That sounds, that sounds right. Let me do the left.
Correct. My, uh, April 8th is the next meeting.
Okay, so I guess we're looking for a motion to continue? As long as there's nothing else to talk to, as Kevin said, as long as there's no other issues we haven't discussed, we wanted to wrap it up quick next week, the modifications, that is.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, or, or maybe better suited for Erica, this is Kevin Erickson again. Um, are we anticipating that the meeting will be remote? I know Governor Baker closed schools through May 4th today, so.
Yeah, I'm sure it will be.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until April 8th. Is that the date?
Seven PM.
At 7:00 PM.
A second.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Yeah, so unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Okay, let me, um.
I just want to apologize, I want to apologize to the board. It's, it's, it's so much back and forth, and we, I feel we can get this done quicker than it needs to be, so.
Looking for the agenda again.
Tedmore?
Did you let Mark back in?
And I will let Mark back in. I was going to pull up the agenda.
Good.
Tedmore?
Oh, I see Mark.
Yep. How was the virtual waiting room? They have any snacks there?
Uh, no, it's very quiet.
No snacks?
No. No, no elevator music, no nothing.
All right. So Tedmore, Plan B to review and approve the allowance of the Tedmore Open Space to be deeded over to the Baltic Conservation Commission after the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. All right, so. I didn't really have many questions on this. I don't know if anybody else did.
Excuse me, Erica?
Yes.
That's Fred. I'm just going to log off then, right?
Oh, thank you, Fred. I appreciate it.
Okay, take care. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Fred. So Greg Roy from Ducharme and Dillis has, has joined the meeting for this particular business item.
Okay, hey Greg.
Hey folks, I'm, I'm at your service. If you need me to explain anything, I'm happy to, or whatever you need.
Background.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I will, um, I will pull up the exhibit that Ducharme submitted as part of this request.
Okay.
Bear with me one second.
That's the 4, 4,000, the 4904 exhibit?
Correct.
Yeah. So I guess, Greg, if you just want to just give a brief explanation of this?
Sure. The, the, the main request this evening is to ask that you allow a delay in the conveyance of Open Space 3, which is the, um, which is the open space that's within the business, uh, zone. But we didn't just want to ask for that. We wanted to give you a little bit more of a, um, understanding of why we're asking, so I provided you with a letter and a little, and this, uh, figure that you, you see before you here. We intend to develop Lot B, which is the frontage of the business land, nominally five acres. I, I'm not, something around that, five, five-ish acres, as, you know, commercially, commercial, um, as a commercial use. And one of the big, one of the big drivers for commercial development is, of course, the, the need to find a location for a public water supply. And Zone 1 radii for public water supply cannot be used for any purpose other than uses explicitly for the operation and maintenance of the public water supply or for passive recreation. So, it's been our intention to put the, um, to use a portion of the open space land for at least some of the Zone 1 radius area, which really would help out and, and add to the viability of the business land for that potential commercial use. And, you know, we've done this on a lot of different projects around, um, you know, open space land and, and Zone 1 protection interests are, are, um, are compatible, I guess. You know, basically what you're looking for is a protected area, um, that's not used for anything other than, you know, basically walking trails and that kind of thing, which is a, a typically a compatible use with, with open space. So, um, the, so the issue with conveying the land at this point is, um, we would need to retain a Zone 1 protection easement in order to do that. And the Department of Environmental Protection typically reviews and approves those as part of a public, as part of the public water supply permitting process. So, uh, and, and that is premature at this point, because we're not sure what the exact commercial use is going to be, and that, of course, drives our, uh, public water supply permitting, uh, effort. So, what we're asking for is, uh, is that we, we be allowed some leeway to, in the timing on the conveyance of OS 3, but we would, we'd still proceed with the conveyance of, of OS 1 and OS 2. And, and this is all being driven, of course, because there is a, a scheduled closing early next month in April, and so, um, you know, the, we started talking about this a few weeks ago, and, and so that's, that's why we're here. We, we've discussed over the past couple of weeks that it might make sense when, uh, prior to conveying OS 3, to do, and actually to reconfigure that lot a little bit, um, as you're seeing, as you kind of see in red. And that would allow us to actually put the physical infrastructure on Lot B, um, but just have the, uh, the well radii overlapping onto the open space. but just have the, the well radii overlapping onto the open space. The areas would remain the same. The area of Lot B would remain the same. The area of the open space through would remain the same. But, you know, so anyway, this plan was our attempt to sort of be transparent and, you know, give you an update as to what, you know, where we are, where we are today.
So is, is this to potentially have the ability to put business along Forbush Mill Road as well? Because if it's on the inside, then potentially you block off that, that frontage.
Well, we'd be, we'd, if we do the, I'm gonna call it a land swap. It's not, you know, that's kind of the way to think about it. Yeah, we'd be giving up a little bit of that frontage. And actually, the Zone 1, part of the Zone 1 radius, radii would extend onto Lot B anyway. So to put any kind of building over there would probably be difficult. Certainly access, though, would be, would be viable, you know, for, for an access road. We did, you know, again, we haven't advanced the, you know, the plans for that commercial use to that level yet.
Can I just understand, so what you're proposing is the square red area is the portion that needs to go into the commercial land or business, whatever, land area? And then that triangle red area would go back into open space? Is that correct?
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
And then, and the areas are equal?
No, the, the areas are, and this is a real, this is intended to just be a graphic to kind of show you a general. We'd obviously come in with a surveyed plan of land that, you know, has meets and bounds and is, you know, prepared by a registered land surveyor. But that, and the reason the wells are positioned there is something that doesn't show in this plan. There's Forbush Mill Brook, I think it's Forbush Mill Brook, runs down to the south of that parcel. And there's a 200-foot riverfront area that extends, you know, up gradient. And those wells are positioned such that they're just outside of the 200-foot riparian zone so that we wouldn't, you know, have any wetland resource area impact. So that's sort of what was one of the drivers for why we, why we proposed those wells.
But you are, I mean, you are allowed a certain amount of disruption in that upper riparian area, though, aren't you?
Yeah, we can, Mark. We just, you know, we were willing to give up, well, obviously being in our best interest to push the wells further south, but we're trying to do a balancing act. I mean, we're willing to, we, we think that we can accommodate any proposed development with some overlap of those radii onto the, onto the Lot B land, which is what we're showing here. So we didn't, we weren't trying to, we weren't trying to push it. We weren't trying to max out that. We, we thought that that was, this was reasonable. I think the Conservation Commission, this is going back a little ways now. Erica, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I, I think the Conservation Commission is interested in us, you know, avoiding impacts into that area, if, if possible, so.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And we see that it's feasible to do so. So that's why we.
Erica, were there any comments by Conservation on this change, or did they not see this?
No, of course, they've seen it, and we've, I've been working pretty closely with Rebecca on getting the open space deeded over to the town. Obviously, Conservation Commission will be the ones that accept it. You know, Rebecca, the only question Rebecca really had, and it actually, I think, had more to not, it had less to do with Open Space Number 3 and more to do with Open Space 1 and 2, was the fact that they had the nitrogen aggregation area in the open space from the subdivision. Town councils reviewed the deed. They had no concerns with that. I don't know, Greg, if you know more about that. I know it was done in Houghton that way. That area is also in their open space, so. But I, I think that's pretty much been put to bed. I, I don't, you know, as long as Town Council didn't have any concerns, I don't think Rebecca really has too many concerns, so.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so basically, for, for those of you that don't know, the, the, the site, because we have onsite wells and septics, nitrogen loading limitations apply relative to Tunnel 5 and the wastewater on the site. So we're limited to the amount of wastewater that can be put. Well, basically what it, what it comes down to is you need to have 10,000 square feet of land area for every one, for every bedroom of, of, that you propose. So five-bedroom houses, for example, require 50,000 square feet of land area. There are a few lots, several lots, I guess, in the subdivision that are, are less than 50,000 because, of course, we use the phosphrid provisions, which allow a lot size of 43, of an acre, 43, 560. So there's a few that fall just under 50,000. And so we, we did a nitrogen aggregation plan, which was permitted through the Board of Health, which, which basically allows us to use credit, quote unquote, credit land to make up the difference. And this is the same thing we did at, as Erica suggested, at Houghton Farm. And, and so the open space land was used as that credit land. And again, that's another compatible use, typically deemed as a compatible use with open space. It's just, it's land that has to be sort of protected as nat, in its natural state. And so it, it sort of works pretty well. You can still use it for walking and those kind of things, which I think is the primary intent of that property, so.
So Eric, I think tonight what I would be looking for is a vote from the board to allow for the conveyance of the open space after the issuance of the, of the first occupancy. According to the way that the phosphrid special permit reads, essentially the open space is supposed to be deeded over before we issue the first occupancy, but obviously we don't want to hold them up. I'd rather have them be able to close on that house. They're working with us to get this open space conveyed, so I, I really have zero concern. It's, it's really just tonight is a procedural thing. I would like to get a, a vote on the record, allowing them, I think Greg was requesting the Open Space 3 be deeded over by the, the ninth occupancy. So I'm, I'm happy just to move it from the first to the ninth for the open space.
Okay, yeah, that sounds fine. Some kind of motion for that.
I don't think I, sorry, what was, Erica, what's the specific motion you're looking for?
And to allow the open space to can be, to be conveyed by the, the ninth certificate of occupancy, the issuance of the, of the ninth certificate of occupancy in lieu of the, of the first.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to allow the open space to be conveyed to the ninth certificate of occupancy.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
Enjoy your ski lodge.
Tucker Minjaveen two weeks ago. My wife and I went up, but anyway.
Oh, nice.
Appreciate all your efforts. I hope all you all stay healthy and well and keep up the good work.
Yeah.
You as well.
You too.
All right. So what do we have left to discuss for the articles? I mean, I think we're in.
I think we're in great shape. I, I have it on there in case there's anything new that, you know, has come up or you'd like me to research or prepare, but really, there's not much to discuss.
Yeah, I think we're good.
I'd say, for now, let's put it on hold. I mean, I'll be shocked if we actually have a in-person town meeting beginning of May.
I, I would agree with that, yeah.
I mean, I don't know if maybe they'll go virtual or not, but I don't know how they do that, but.
Yeah, let's, uh, go to the next. What else do we got here?
I think it's just minutes, right?
Just minutes.
Yeah. And you sent us, it was, let's see, the 22nd of January and the 25th of March. I had no issues with either one.
I don't either.
I was okay with the February ones. The March ones, not yet. Okay.
It, it brought up a question, Erica. What do we do if we have to sign stuff as a board?
So I actually just received an email from the town clerk today about that. They're gonna accept meeting minutes. So as long as the board votes, I essentially am just gonna write something at the top with my, my initials saying that the board voted and capturing, you know, who agreed to it.
But what about like on plans and, you know, Mylar copies and things like that that need to get filed?
Yeah, um, I don't know that the states really weighed in on that yet. I know they've provided some leniencies on some other things. So at this point, what we're doing is Jenny Jacobson's ordered essentially this large mailbox that can be locked, that we can put plans in where each member can individually go and, and sign and leave it in the mail. I know it's not ideal, but I don't know how else to do it. For now.
You've got a copy of all the signature cards, so put them under the Mylar and trace.
I would just say, too bad we couldn't do electronic signatures, because that would be very easy if you sent it around. But I get that they're electronic and not original.
But they may change it, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, there's new things, you know, Governor Baker, you know, is passing legislation, you know, weekly right now, so I don't know. It could change.
Yeah.
It's, it's almost daily, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
We're affected as well.
Yeah.
Now, we're, we're having to every, every day adjust our schedule with, with training, so, um. I mean, it's something that i, i, if need be, I would imagine with this social distancing, is it something that, I mean, i, i, is it bad to come in one at a time to?
No, I think that would be fine.
I mean, I'm okay with that.
I mean, that's sort of the, the purpose of the mailbox. I mean, technically, the, 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 at least town hall's not open to the public at the moment. So, you know, it'd be just a matter of pulling up into the parking lot, you know, opening up the box, signing it and, you know, and being done with it, so.
Okay. Well, there's nothing to sign this week, so we're good, right?
Exactly. Can I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from, and I apologize, I accidentally sent the, my draft March. So it's, it's really January 22nd and February 26th that I would be looking to get approved.
I'll make a motion to approve January 22nd, and what'd you say, February?
26th.
26, 2020.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. First one of these in the books. Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. See you later, everybody.
Thank you.